I'd like to call the meeting to order. 2.2, Pledge of Allegiance. Like to ask Mr. Abula to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand. Thank you very much. 2.3, Approval Agenda. So move.
Second.
Should move, and I have a second. Any proposed changes? Interchangeable vote. Mr. Abula?
Aye.
Ms. Elzotma?
Aye.
And Ms. Gallardo?
Aye.
Ms. Sables and Ms. Chawski?
I'm logged out.
Aye.
Motion passed. Section 3, Special Presentation and Recognition, 3.1, San Bernardino County Teacher, I should say Teachers of the Year Award. And you can give a round of applause. And I am very excited and very proud to introduce from Brown Elementary School, Mrs. Lorraine Bowen. Please stand. And from Golden Valley Middle School, Mrs. Carla Hernandez. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mary Rhone Goodwin.
Well, good evening and thank you, President Tillman. I am the Director of Communications and Community Relations. And on behalf of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, Board of Education and Superintendent Mauricio Ariano, I am delighted to welcome you to this special recognition honoring two exceptional educators who have not only made a profound impact on their students and schools, but have also earned the prestigious title of 2025 San Bernardino County Teachers of the Year. At this time, would the Board of Education and Superintendent Ariano please take their places at the front of the dais? Executive Cabinet members, please stand in your usual places. You'll be the first to welcome our brilliant teachers. Before we begin, I'd like to take a quick moment to recognize the distinguished members of our community who have joined us today. When I call your name, please stand to be recognized. Representing the Office of Senator Ochoa Bog is Michael Glossner, Glosser. We have Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. Also supporting Supervisor Baca is Edwin Delgado. Representing the Office of Assemblymember Ramos is Alex Espinoza. Representing the San Bernardino County Schools Board of Education is Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers. Also representing San Bernardino County Schools is Mr. Rob Roberts. And representing the City of San Bernardino and our esteemed mayor is Mr. Damon Alexander. If we have any more electeds or special guests, we'd ask you to stand at this point and be recognized. If not, we are going to get this program started. We are going to also welcome our representatives who are going to be presenting, while some of our folks are going to be sharing some brief remarks in just a few short moments. And while we could not be here this evening, Congressman Pete Aguilar has sent some special recognitions for our two esteemed teachers. At this time, I want to bring your attention to our two honorees. We are celebrating their brilliance, dedication, and inspiring work of these two amazing educators who give of themselves and make our district shine. They remind us of the profound impact that dedicated educators can have on the lives of our students and the future of our community. As we work to put Vision 2030 SBCUSD Shines into action, teachers like them will be instrumental in helping our students reach their full potential. There are over tens of thousands of teachers within our county, and we are proud to say that not just one, but two of them are being recognized as 2025 San Bernardino County Teachers of the Year. They will join three others in our county to be considered for the State Teacher of the Year Program. We first wish to honor Mrs. Lorraine Bowen, an outstanding teacher from Brown Elementary School. Mrs. Bowen, your passion for nurturing young minds and fostering a love for learning is truly extraordinary. You've touched the lives of so many students, helping them to believe in their potential and guiding them towards success. Please give a big SBCUSD round of applause for Mrs. Lorraine Bowen. We are also incredibly proud to recognize Mrs. Carla Hernandez, a remarkable math teacher from Golden Valley Middle School. Carla, your innovative approach to teaching and unwavering commitment to your students has set a high standard for educators across this county. Your ability to make math come alive in the classroom is nothing short of inspiring. Let's hear it one more time for Mrs. Carla Hernandez. I'd like to first invite San Bernardino County Supervisor Joe Baca to provide some brief remarks and present our two honorees.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, President, Board, and Board of Education, Superintendent Ariano, and community. And it really gives me great pleasure to acknowledge Ms. Lorraine Bowen and Carla Hernandez for 2025 San Bernardino County Teachers of the Year. And this is a testament to the extraordinary impact that they have in our community. What's more appropriate is they were recognized by the 5th District this past year as Educators of the Year. And we do it every May, but you know, I just want to say congratulations on behalf of the County Board of Supervisors. We value what you do for our children. And as a former educator of 15 years, you know, sometimes you don't realize how much of a difference you make. You may not make it immediately, but many years down the road, those kids will remember your lessons. They'll remember your kindness. They'll remember how you've been sincere. And that's important. You have a lasting impact, and people don't realize how much educators really impact. I know that Mickey's been in the classroom for several years. Mauricio's been in the classroom. And Dr. Wyatt's also been in the classroom. So you understand firsthand. But we're just so proud of you and blessed to have you because, you know, when you have someone that's that talented, they can do other things. But they chose to be here and stay here in our school district here in the San Bernardino City Unified and continue to touch our children. It's good to see you again, and we're very, very proud of you. So on behalf of the County Board of Supervisors, we have certificates of recognition, some beautiful plaques which are well deserved. On behalf of the county, I want to say congratulations and keep doing what you're doing. God bless you. Thank you so much.
From the San Bernardino County Board of Education is Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers.
So good evening to everyone, to the board and to the superintendent. So good to be back home and to see you all. And you all know that I'm going through some challenging times right now, but you are my family. And this is the reason why I wanted to come out tonight, to celebrate these two wonderful women. We appreciate your service and what you have done. It wasn't until just recently that I realized, and Danny probably knows this because he remembers things better than I, but I didn't even realize it that for many, many years, my own mother actually was here in the district as a teacher's aide for many years. My brother and I, my brothers, rather, I have older brothers, honestly thought that our mom was just there to spy on us. And over the years, I thought that's what it was until we began to work on her obituary and realized, just like what you all are doing and more, that teaching was so important. And she was a teacher among teachers, and so are you. You do not know the lives that you impact, but you impact so many students that will look back over the years. And I can think about the teachers that taught me the love of reading and the love of making sure that I did what I needed to do in education to become the woman that I am today. So I just want to tell you all, I appreciate you. We love you for what you do. There's many, many more years left for you to do some amazing things. You may even take Mauricio's job, but I'm just saying, you know. But congratulations to you, to you, Lorraine Bowman. I will read one of these, and this is what our certificate says today. The San Bernardino County Board of Education proudly awards this certificate in recognition of receiving the 2025 San Bernardino County Teacher of the Year Award. You are hereby presented with the certificate on this 20th day of August, 2024. God bless you and may you continue to grow in your teaching.
I'm proud to introduce the gentleman whose division really does support this program for the County Teacher of the Year. He represents San Bernardino County Schools as the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Mr. Rob Roberts.
Thank you very much, Mary Rhone. Boy, it's great to be here. I'm here on behalf of our County Superintendent, Mr. Ted O'Andre. And first of all, to give you some perspective, there are 307,000 teachers in the state of California. There's 21,000 certificated employees, 19,000 teachers, including our classified employees, critically important. There's 40,000, over 40,000 in San Bernardino County. There's one substitute that you can never take away from a child, and that is passion that an adult gives to a student. And they'll see right through it. And for the two of you, you now are in a class by yourself. You're two of San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools, Teacher of the Year for San Bernardino County. And there's 58 counties, which means you have an opportunity to represent the state of California as a Teacher of the Year. So the two of you are the very best. Congratulations to you. And we look forward to hosting you on September 19th, a nice shadow box, if I may say, the best. But congratulations to you and your families that give up so much. Because the biggest gift you can give to a child is a gift of your time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Representing the San Bernardino Mayor Helen Tran and the entire city council is 7th Ward Councilman, Mr. Damon Alexander.
Hi, I'm Councilman Damon Alexander, representing the 7th Ward of the City of San Bernardino. On behalf of the mayor and council of San Bernardino, I appreciate it. I thought I was going last. I was like, what can you say after everybody then gave you all your platitudes, right? But I appreciate, the mayor and council appreciates what you have done. And more importantly, we appreciate what you and your family have done, what your family have given up. Because you have a family that it makes you who you are. So again, thank you for that. And I'm going to read one of these real quick, which it says, "Congratulations on your passion for teaching, innovation, and approach to learning. Unwavering support for your students, you have made a profound impact on the lives of those that you serve. Your outstanding contributions to our community exemplified by the highest standards of educational excellence, and your inspired colleagues and students to strive for greatness. We extend our heartfelt congratulations and deepest appreciation for your remarkable achievements on your dedication for shaping the future." And for those that are at Golden Valley, which I represent that ward, thank you for representing the 7th Ward. But thank you again, and I have a couple of certificates for you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Alexander. We also have some representatives for folks that were not able to join us today. So presenting a resolution on behalf of the Office of Senator Rosalicio Ochoa Bog is Mr. Michael Glosser. Please feel free to present a certificate and take a photo on her behalf as well. Representing the Office of Assemblymember Ramos is Mr. Alex Espinoza. We invite you to please present your resolutions and take a photo with our honorees this evening. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Ashley Betas Alcala, who is representing our San Bernardino Teachers Association.
Good evening, ladies. On behalf of the 3,000 members of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, which you both are a part of, we just want to sincerely congratulate you. We know that the single most defining moment in a child's life can be their teacher. And so we just sincerely thank you for the work that you do every day in San Bernardino because we are very proud of you, and we are proud that you are going on to the state level. And we hope we can see you at our California Teachers Association State Council as one of the top teachers in the state. We wish you very much luck on the next round. And we are very proud to be actively participating in the Teacher of the Year County Awards again. So sincere congratulations, and we look forward to seeing you out in your classrooms.
I'd like to invite Mrs. Lorraine Bowen to join us at the podium so that she can provide some brief remarks.
Overwhelming night. First and foremost, I want to express my deepest gratitude for the opportunity to be honored at tonight's board meeting. To say that this has been meaningful would be an understatement. It's brought many unexpected surprises such as tonight, immense joy, and countless unforgettable moments. As I stand here, having been selected as the Teacher of the Year for San Bernardino, I'm reminded of this celebration. It's not solely for me. It's a reflection of the hard work, dedication, and resilience of both students and teachers in our district. I dedicate this award to all the bright, ambitious students who carry dreams, aspirations, and hopes for a brighter future. I too was once one of those students, a young child within a wavering drive to succeed. My journey from that place to becoming a teacher is a testament to what perseverance and dedication can achieve. Getting emotional. If I can live out my dreams, so can the students of San Bernardino. Moreover, I dedicate this honor to the remarkable staff and educators of SBCUSD. It's essential that we never lose sight of our original purpose, the why that motivated us to pursue a career in education. Think back to your earliest days when you first set foot in a classroom. What vision did you have for transforming this world? Let those aspirations guide you. Our students need us now more than ever. They need mentors and role models. After two decades in the district, I still return to my classroom each year with the same sense of purpose. My why remains clear as it's for my students. While this award may bear my name, it carries significant meaning for the entire community. It serves as a reminder for our united mission to make San Bernardino City Unified a nurturing, safe, and inspiring environment where our students can thrive. Our students deserve the very best, and with our continued support, they will go on to create a world filled with possibilities that we can look forward to. Finally, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to my family, whose unwavering support has been my foundation throughout this journey. I love you all dearly. Could not have achieved any of this without your encouragement. And with just deep appreciation, thank you once again. I will be forever grateful for this moment and for our students. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Carla Hernandez to also share her remarks.
Good evening. And I'm homegrown. This means a lot because San Bernardino has seen me through my best times, my worst times. San Bernardino City Unified School District, I was born and raised here. Went to elementary, middle school, and high school here. And this is the only place I've ever taught, is San Bernardino. And there's no other place I would rather be. So for me, it's a very endearing award. But definitely want to thank San Bernardino County Schools. I'm still blown away. I still don't know what to think. So but thank you. I really appreciate even the thoughtfulness of considering me. I want to thank the Board of Education. I've grown up watching some of you. I've grown up watching some of you that were teachers and just been here in several occasions as a youngster in school. And I hope you take the time to understand the power that you possess and the positivity that you exude in the community is very, very important for us because we are a community filled with families, filled with a cultura that runs deep, and you're a very important part of that. I want to thank Mr. Ariano especially for your leadership, but more importantly, for your belief in San Bernardino. You have a pride that goes far beyond a job, and I appreciate that. You make me excited to work here. I want to thank the EDD program. Without Morgan and Shanna and Mary, I mean, to become a demonstration teacher was exciting, but it has taken me from a good teacher to a great teacher. And that program is, I can't even describe the amount of support that I get there. SBTA, you're my voice, and I appreciate you. I appreciate the work that you've done together as a board with SBTA. There's, I talk about San Bernardino all the time. This is the best district that you could possibly work in, and I'm not ashamed to say it. I want to thank the wonderful film crew and Mary Rhone Goodwin and her department. I don't know what you did, but wow. Wow, thank you so much for your hard work. I want to thank my administration. They're not just my admin, they're my family. I've known so many of them for so many years, grew up with two of them teaching together at Arrow View Middle School. And I just want to appreciate their leadership and the freedom they allow me in my classroom. And just that support. So Mr. Diaz, Ms. Bonjour, and Shawna White, and the wonderful staff at Golden Valley Middle School, my math teachers, some of our classified staff, the office staff, they're family. And we work as such, that collaborative, that collaborative work that we do together. My students, those are my babies, and I love them, and I want to thank them because they show up every day. Showing up is not an easy thing in this day and age, and they show up, and they show up ready to learn. My family, my husband, he works construction. He couldn't be here tonight because if you don't work, you don't get paid. So I said, listen, you got to do what you got to do. He's working far in LA today. My son's at football, and my daughter is in college right now. But my sister and her fiance, and one of my best friends, I just want to thank my family just for giving that support to me. And just leave you with the last couple of things is, God bless me with a calling. Unlike maybe some of these people in this world, teaching isn't a job, it's not even a career, it's a calling. It's the purpose that I've been given in life. I teach not only in San Bernardino, but I'm a chaplain at the LA County Women's Jail, so I teach there too. And I recognize my calling and I take it serious, especially for the next generation that's coming up. And just want to And just want to dedicate this award to my mom, who passed away 20 years ago. She was an EA3 here in the district for many years, born and raised in San Bernardino. Our roots run deep. And want to accept the award on behalf of the district, on behalf of the county, and our staff and administration, and our students. And I just want to remind us of one thing, is that consistency changes lives. The fact that you show up here, the fact that you're willing to pour out your life, it changes lives, and that dedication does not go unused. And I just want to leave you with one last thing. The great Paul the Apostle said that not to grow weary of doing good, because it's going to pay off in due time. And I see the payment here in San Bernardino. We have transformed the city and turned this place upside down for positivity, and I pray for the years to come, we continue to. So thank you so much.
As we close, I'd like to invite our superintendent to speak as we reflect on the significance of this moment and the achievements of Mrs. Carla Hernandez and Mrs. Lorraine Bowen.
Well, good evening, everyone, and everyone watching in. And I had the opportunity to celebrate these two ladies individually at their school sites. So I don't want to repeat everything that I said that day. But I want to start off with number one, how incredibly proud the members of the Board of Education, Cabinet, myself, and everyone in this district and the community are of the two of you. I've been in your classrooms, and you are stellar. You are outstanding, and we do appreciate the positive impact that you make on all of our students. And for me, it's extra special, not only that we have two right here in San Bernardino, but extra special because I am also homegrown, and I am a product of everything that teachers poured into me and everything that this district poured into me. And so you are doing the same to many kids, and you're changing the trajectory of lives. And I do appreciate that. So on behalf of everyone in the San Bernardino City Unified School District, congratulations, we cheer you on, and we hope that you both win the State Teacher of the Year, okay? So let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you.
I'd also like to invite our board president, Mr. Danny Tillman, as well, to share some remarks on behalf of the board.
Thank you very much. And your speeches were just inspiring. And it's clear why you won the award, because it's in your heart. You know, we as board members try to set the table and give you guys the resources that you need to do your job. And it's a tough job, and you excel above all the others, and we congratulate you for that. And more so than congratulate, we really do appreciate you. We really understand what it takes to teach our kids where they are. And you are successful, therefore our kids are successful, because of the love that you have for them. And for that, we say thank you, congratulations.
Well, this concludes our special celebration. We want to thank you all for joining us. You have made us so proud, and we are looking forward to that celebration in September with county schools, and then the later celebration. We're hoping that you will reach that state level. Thank you so much.
3.2 Resolution in recognition of Attendance Awareness Month. Like to ask Mrs. Alexander to read that for us.
Sorry about that. Whereas good attendance is essential for student achievement and developing the habit of regular attendance prepares students to succeed from cradle to career. And whereas chronic absenteeism most severely impacts low-income students and children with special needs, especially if they lack resources to make up for lost classroom time in home. And whereas chronic absences can significantly reduce when schools, parents, faith-based organizations, businesses, community leaders, and elected officials work together to promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. And whereas SBCUSD 2024 to 2025 Attendance Awareness Campaign theme is Missing School is Missing Out, which reminds students and families that everyday students miss school, they are all missing out on learning, social interaction with their peers, and much more. And whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District dedicates resources and attention to reducing chronic absenteeism and partners with families, parents, and school leaders to make attendance a top priority. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District recognizes September 2024 as Attendance Awareness Month. And be it further resolved, that the Board of Education recognizes greater attention is needed to improve student attendance and hereby commits to reducing chronic absenteeism to give children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. So moved. I can't.
Been moved by Mrs. Alexander and second by Ms. Ceballos. Vote, please. Mr. Avila.
Aye.
Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
And Ms. Galardo.
Aye.
Motion passed. 3.3 Resolution on recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month. Like to ask Ms. Ceballos to read that for us.
Thank you, President Tillman. Whereas the period from September 15 through October 15, officially known as National Hispanic Heritage Month, is a time to honor the many historical and modern contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans. And whereas those dates coincide with the important events in Latin American history, including the September 15 anniversary of Independence for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, the September 16 anniversary of Mexico's independence, and the September 18 anniversary of Chile's independence. And whereas Hispanic and Latino Americans share ancestry and cultural ties with Mexico, Central and South America, the Caribbean, Cuba, and Spain. And this diversity has brought invaluable perspectives, experiences, and values to the district. And whereas the district celebrates the vibrant Latin American spirit that influences our nation and also recognizes the practices of commitment to family, love of country, and respect of others, which are virtues that transcend ethnicity, reflect the American spirit, and are exemplified in the Hispanic and Latino American communities. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins towns and cities in our state and nation in recognizing September 15 through October 15, 2023, as Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month, and directs that appropriate activities for celebrating Hispanic and Latino American heritage and culture take place in the district schools. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ceballos and second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Mr. Avila.
Aye.
Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
And Ms. Galardo.
Aye.
Motion carried. 3.4 Resolution in recognition of Public Schools Month. Like to ask Dr. Wyatt to read that for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas for more than a century, the Free and Accepted Masons of California have recognized the value of public education, supported public schools through the observance of Public Schools Month and related programs and initiatives. And whereas public schools are responsible not only for sound instructional programs that prepare and equip our youth to have productive lives as adults, but also for instilling in our children a love of freedom and appreciation for the benefits of living in a democratic society. And whereas with support from organizations such as the Masons and other community organizations throughout California, public schools can ensure that students have equal access to learning a safe and healthy environment in which to grow and chance to achieve their dreams. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education for the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins the Free and Accepted Masons of California and school districts across the state in declaring September 2024 to be Public Schools Month and acknowledging the importance role of public education in developing students educationally and socially. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please. Mr. Avila.
Aye.
Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
And Ms. Galardo.
Aye.
Motion passed. 4.1 Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Formation of Community Facilities District Number 2024-1, The Proposed Levy of Special Taxes of Community Facilities District Number 2024-1, and Incurring Bonded Indebtedness Within Community Facilities District Number 2024-1. Like to open the public hearing. Are there any public comments for the public hearing, Mrs. Cunningham?
There are none.
Like to close the public hearing. Be resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District does hereby adopt the resolution of the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District approving and authorizing the execution of the school facilities funding and mitigation agreement and delegate authority related thereto. A motion, please. So moved. Moved by Dr. Wyatt. And second by Ms. Ceballos. Vote, please. Mr. Avila.
Aye.
Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
And Ms. Galardo.
Aye.
Motion carried. 5.2 Resolution of the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District determining validity of prior proceedings establishing Community Facilities District Number 2024-1 of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, authorizing the levy of special taxes within the Community Facilities District 2024-1, establishing an appropriations limit, making certain findings calling and election, and taking related actions. This resolution of formation makes various determinations relative to the proposed CFD Number 2024-1 as required by the Act and directs the formation of CFD Number 2024-1. CFD Number 2024-1 will be a separate legal entity for which the board will sit as a legislative body once CFD Number 2024-1 is formed. The resolution also calls a combined special tax and bond election within CFD Number 2024-1 pursuant to the provisions of the Act per the findings set forth in this resolution and the waivers of the time limitations provided by the owner of all property located within the CFD Number 2024-1. These elections do not require additional notice and can be conducted as a mail-in elections. Elections will be conducted by school district staff and the designated voting representatives of the owner of all properties located within CFD Number 2024-1. Be resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District does hereby adopt the resolution determining the validity of prior proceedings establishing Community Facilities District Number 2024-1 of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, authorizes a levy of special taxes within the Community Facilities District Number 2024-1, establishing an appropriations limit, making certain findings, calling an election, and taking related actions. Board will now proceed with the following agenda items, 5.3 through 5.6, acting as a legislative body of the CFD Number 2024. But before I do that, I want to entertain a motion for the previous resolution. Moved by Dr. Wyatt. Second by Mr. Husky. Vote, please. Mr. Avila.
Aye.
Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
And Ms. Galardo.
Oh, aye.
Motion passed. I want to adjourn the meeting, the regular meeting, and then open the new meeting. The board will now proceed with the following agenda items, 5.3 through 5.6, acting as a legislative body of CFD Number 2024-1. 5.3 Resolution of the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District acting as a legislative body of Community Facilities District Number 2024-1 of the San Bernardino City Unified School District determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness in an amount not to exceed $13,500,000 within Community Facilities District Number 2024-1 of the San Bernardino City Unified School District. Pursuant to the resolution of formation, the Board of Education took action and formed Community Facilities District Number 2024-1. The Board of Education acting as a legislative body of CFD Number 2024-1 will be taking action to seek authorization to incur bonded indebtedness within CFD Number 2024-1. This resolution determines the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness within CFD Number 2024-1 in an aggregate not to exceed amount of $13,500,000 as detailed in the Community Facilities District report. It is not anticipated that the CFD Number 2024-1 will ultimately issue the full authorization of $13,500,000 of bonds. However, this amount is to provide flexibility in terms of the timing for the future sale and pricing of bonds. Be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District acting as a legislative body of the Community Facilities District Number 2024-1 of the San Bernardino City Unified School District does hereby adopt the resolution determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness in an amount not to exceed $13,500,000 within Community Facilities District Number 2024-1 of the San Bernardino City Unified School District. Like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Alexander and second by Ms. Grande. And I have a question from Ms. Medina.
Yes, as we're approving these, and...
Yes, as we're approving these and voting on these ones, I'm curious, so is this basically, we're now moving into the election, is that what this is saying?
This is for the new construction in an area of the city, and I'll let Mr. Komenick explain exactly what we're doing here. Mr. Komenick?
This is specifically for 171 new single homes that are being built just east of the 15 freeway, just south of the Glen Helen Parkway, specifically for this area. So those homes that are being built will be assessed this special levy that will only belong to that grouping of homes. It is not across the city of San Bernardino.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yes, ma'am.
Great question. And we had a motion by, we had a motion and a second, and now we're going to vote. It was moved by Felicia Alexander and seconded by Mary Ellen. Mr. Avila.
Aye.
Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
And Ms. Galardo.
Aye.
Motion carried. 5.4 Special Tax and Bond Election. Conduct special tax and bond election and receive results of election for Community Facilities District Number 2024-1. Pursuant to the resolution of formation, the Board of Education, acting as a legislative body of CFD Number 2024-1, called a combined special tax election to incur bonded indebtedness and an election, authorizing a levy of the special taxes within the CFD Number 2024-1 and establishing an appropriations limit for CFD Number 2024-1. The election will be conducted by the district associate superintendent of business, facilities, and operations or designee as the election official. Be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino Unified School District does hereby approve conducting a special tax and bond election and to receive the results for Community Facilities District Number 2024-1. Can I get a motion for that? Moved by Ms. Grande. Seconded by Ms. Husky. Have a question from Ms. Medina.
To the last question I asked, is this anything, any different than, is this something else?
Same thing.
Same thing. So all of these that we're voting on is specifically to that property that you're referring to? Okay, thank you.
Yes, that is correct.
Mr. Avila.
Aye.
Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
And Ms. Galardo.
Aye.
Has the election official received a ballot from the qualified voters within the CFD?
Yes, sir.
If so, please declare the results of the election.
Members of the Board, the special election called for CFD Number 24, 2024-1 on the combined special tax and bond election has been conducted. The results of the election are as follows. We received one ballot with 137 votes and was in favor, and there were zero votes that opposed.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
5.5 Resolution of the Board of Education of the San Bernardino Unified School District, acting as a legislative body of Community Facilities District Number 2024-1, canvassing the results of the elections held within Community Facilities District Number 2024-1 of the San Bernardino Unified School District. Pursuant to the resolution of formation, the Board of Education, acting as a legislative body of the CFD Number 2024-1, called a combined special election, tax election, to incur bonded indebtedness and an election, authorizing a levy of the special taxes within the CFD Number 2024-1 and establishing an appropriations limit for CFD Number 2024-1. The election will be conducted by the district's associate superintendent, business, facilities, and operations or designee as the election official. The election official will announce the results of the election and prepare a certification of the election results, which, once completed, will be attached to this resolution. Be resolved, that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino Unified School District, acting as a legislative body of the Community Facilities District Number 2024-1, does hereby adopt the resolution canvassing the results of the elections held within the Community Facilities District Number 2024-1 of the San Bernardino Unified School District. Entertained a motion? Moved by Mr. Husky.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Alexander. I have a question for Ms. Medina.
I'm still, when I see now that, especially the last one, that there was 144, I believe, votes casted, and then, and this one shows canvassing, or canvassing the results of elections, can you just at least briefly explain? How do we get to that point of the elections and the votes? Who are the ones actually voting? And if you can explain that?
Yeah, this is a, a single developer who has sole property rights for the property to be developed. So that, there, there is no other persons or entity that would be authorized to cast a ballot or a vote in this specific area. There's, it's just open land.
Well, then how were you able to receive votes?
From the developer. They're, they're the only one who can, who can, they're the sole owner. They're the only one that has the authority to vote.
Right, but you mentioned, was it 144 or did I?
137.
137.
Within the.
The organization?
Within the organization, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The move and second. Vote, please. Mr. Avila.
Aye.
Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
And Ms. Galardo.
Aye.
Mr. Komenick, have we received the waivers from the landowners that are necessary to conduct the combined special tax and bond election within the CFD Number 2024-1 at this time?
Yes, we have received the written waivers from the landowners within the proposed CDF permitting the election to be held at this time.
Motion carried. 5.6 First Reading of the Ordinance of the Community Facilities Number 2024-1, San Bernardino Unified School District, authorizing the levy of a special tax within Community Facilities District 2024-1. As part of completion of the CFD formation process, a special tax ordinance needs to be adopted, so the special taxes for CFD Number 2024-1 can be levied and collected within CFD Number 2024-1. The ordinance procedure prescribed by law requires a two-step process before the ordinance may be adopted. This item is to conduct the first reading of this ordinance. Be it resolved, that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino Unified School District approves the first reading of the ordinance by the title only. Entertained a motion, please. Moved by Mr. Husky, seconded by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Mr. Avila.
Aye.
Ms. Elzatma.
Aye.
And Ms. Galardo.
Aye.
Motion passed. Copies of the proposed ordinance are available at the district's business office for public inspection. Members of the public may also request a copy. The proposed ordinance be emailed by calling 909-388-6100. Option 1, it is expected that the ordinance will be formally adopted during the September 3, 2024 meeting. The matters related to CFD Number 2024-1 are completed for this evening. The Board will no longer be acting as legislative body of CFD Number 2024-1 and will resume as the Board of Education. Section 6, public comments. Receive public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the Board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, and fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. Our first public comment comes from Lenny Moore.
Hi, everyone. How you guys doing? This is Titus and Gwen, my kids. But, you know, I had a lot of trouble with my son over the last two years in school in, in the district over here, and you know, it was fighting. Kids kept messing with him. He's just turned nine, so a lot of the kids in his grade are turning 10. They're a little bit older than him because of how his birthday is, is placed. So he's always a smaller kid, but he's, he's kind, he's kind of funny, you know, he's, he's that guy. He's a cool guy. But the kids would push him, and he wouldn't do nothing back. So he didn't want to go to school. My wife was telling him, don't push him back, and I told him, and have a father growing up, so I told him, you gotta push him back. So he started pushing back. And then we started getting calls from administration. And it just kept escalating with the same, like, two children. And I told the administration, can you please advise these children to keep their hands off my child? And they said, we can't, basically, we can't do that. You know what I mean? So it escalated, this is over a course of two years. One of the kids tried kicking him, and he missed. My son put him in a headlock. I get a call saying, your son put a child in a headlock. One of the children kicked him in the head, right? He's playing soccer, he fell, took the opportunity to kick him. And I got a call saying, another student's foot hit your son in the head, and I'm like, hit my son in the head? And I'm, I'm very into like, like, language, diction, semantics, which chose, what words do you choose, right? I'm very particular with that, right? Like, I like Ms. Abigail there, like, I, your brain's working, your brain's working. I like that, right? So that's me. So a lot of times I have issues with people because I'll ask, well, how do you mean that, like, exactly? And I usually say exactly what I mean. There's no guessing what I'm thinking because I'm going to tell you precisely what I mean, right? So, long story short, it's already been long. It, I asked, you know, I asked administration to remove the child from the class. They said he's on the spectrum. And I said, well, that doesn't remove him from his responsibility. Then he had ODD, which I've never heard of, it was a bunch of excuses. And it culminated with my son getting stabbed in the neck with a pencil from this child, right? Like, baww in the back of the neck, right, right? So I, of course, furious, but I can't be too furious because they don't listen to you when you're mad, right? So I was trying to maintain a little, little calmness and get my point across. Still, nothing. I, I, I told, she was an assistant there, assistant vice president, and I told her, can you remove him now? It happened at the lunch tables. So they said, well, it didn't happen in the class, so why would I remove him from the class? And I was dumbfounded. So I was like, you want my child to be stabbed in the class? Because it didn't happen in the class? Like, the, the logic just didn't work for me, you know what I mean? I didn't, I'm a simple guy. It didn't make sense to me. So they said it wasn't bullying. It has to be pervasive. It has to be repetitive. So I called Marlene Bykendova, the bullying person. And office call after call after call, didn't work, and called her a whole bunch. I came here and talked to a nice guy, Mr. Chavez. Nice man. Just brick wall, brick wall, can't do anything. It has to be repetitive. So I said, you want my son to get hurt again? Doesn't, doesn't stand a reason. What are we talking about? And eventually, you don't remember me, but I called Mr. Ariano over there on his cellphone, because I don't, I mean, I'm a nice guy, but if I have to, you know, I'll, I'll get serious. So I contacted him, and he called me right away, and he listened, and then he cared, and then he got me in contact with the right person. And, you know, Dr. Rodriguez showed up. I'm a man, but she's still kind of, kind of intimidating. She shows up, you know, she, she, her face was all business. Her attitude was all business. It was about getting it right, you know, and what was right for my child was having a safe place to go and having somewhere, you know, to look forward to, not having to fight. Because he started whopping them up pretty good, right? You look at that smile. He started beating them up. When they pushed him, he threw them in the ground. You know, and I was getting calls, your sons, he pushed a kid today. Well, why was he within pushing range with my son? Tell the kid to back up, but simple stuff. They had three tetherball poles and only one ball. So they fought over tetherball. She, she got in there and got on the other balls they needed. Like, simple stuff, but she showed up, gave him a voice that mattered at the school. And this year, he's looking forward to coming to school, right? Yeah, yeah, so it's all good. You want to say anything? But I just wanted to thank you, you know, Dr. Rodriguez, for showing up and, you know, being serious, but, you know, being malleable and, and personable enough to work with a child, which, you know, a lot of times it doesn't work that way. So that's my time, but thank you all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Ben Pratt.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to be back here again. Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, Board members, thanks for having us again. I really appreciate all the cooperation that you guys have given us. I feel like you guys have been a great friend of the IBW throughout this, this process. Last time I was here, we discussed forming a committee. I believe it was voted into fruition, and so I figured I should come here and give you guys kind of an update about what we've been up to in the district. So after our last meeting, we scheduled with the meeting with Dr. Kay, Dr. Venkatesan, and Chelsea Ramirez in the Secondary Education Department. And we had a great meeting, and we discussed expansion of the pre-apprenticeship programs that our training department has put in place now. And we want to let you guys know that we have already begun the process of filing with the Department of Apprenticeship Standards and with workforce development, you know, to get true accreditation for these programs. So that way, these kids could actually get true credit for, for this class and kind of create a pipeline directly into the electrical industry. We really want to bridge the gap between graduation and employment, you know, through that type of a process to where these kids are, are receiving favoritism by getting able, being able to skip a certain part of our process and go to kind of a direct interview process. And we would like that to expand into all of the building trades here in the near future, and I've been working with them and discussing that at length. And at our next meeting, I intend to have people from the different building trades come and, and, and address this body. We also discussed the fact that job placement for these pre-apprentices, becoming apprentices, kind of depends directly on work picture. And so that kind of segues into what we had discussed with the Community Workforce Agreement, where we're working on putting language into action that, that promotes local hire. Some, you know, some concerns were expressed to me that this may be non-inclusive. Well, I guarantee you, any CWA that the IBW wants to be a part of, or any of the building trades want to be a part of, must be inclusive to women, minority, and veteran-owned, veteran-owned local businesses and provide employment opportunity for all underrepresented communities. We care about this community. You guys have heard me say it before. I'm from here, and this, this city needs its middle class back. And I think that this room is the best place to start that process, you know, get that ball rolling again. And I know that we have the right people in this room to, to make that happen for us. Another thing I think that is, is important to bring up is that these agreements are not union-exclusive. Anybody that wishes to operate within the guardrails of a Community Workforce Agreement can bid and be awarded these projects. So we are not asking for union exclusivity or anything like that. We want everybody to play by the rules. We want coordination. The project's done right the first time. We want those projects to be done by our local kids. And again, I appreciate the fact that a lot of you have shared those same sentiments with me. I have provided the Board with a framework to go over and take a look at, whenever you have time to do that. Please remember that it's just, it's only a framework, and it can be tailored to, to the needs and desires of this community. And finally, I look forward to seeing many of you at our, at our apprenticeship rodeo coming up on September 3. I know right now we have 40 students from the district intending to be exposed to our industry. I know right now, we have 40 students from the district attending to be exposed to our industry. And with that, if there's any questions for our Training Director, he's right here as far as curriculum goes or anything like that.
I do wanna tell you that, I think you guys sent me an email about a, a meeting date.
That was me.
And I meant to tell you I can meet, but send, send me the email again.
I will.
And uh, I don't think, I think the day was in September, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be able to meet, so just remind me.
Thanks, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Hello, everybody, you guys hear me okay? So I'm John Drew, I'm the Director for the Indian Springs Electrical Training Center. I am your local electrical apprenticeship program for you guys' community. Our training center is located less than five miles from here, over off of Hospitality and Waterman. Anytime, you guys are welcome to come by and take a tour and I'll show you around the training center and what we do there. You know, I have over 500 electrical apprentices, over 500 trainees, probably have about 1,000 students, pretty close to that. Plus ongoing education of all your local electricians that live in this area. Uh, I'm excited to work at you guys' district. We've worked with you guys now since uh, last summer. I've worked with uh, you guys' CT Coordinator, John Wingo. He's been great to work with, he's delivered everything that he said he was going to, which was round up the potential candidates, give me the classroom space, which I've been coming in personally and teaching your guys' high school kids. And I got some great candidates, I even saw one of them come in and uh, and apply this summer. And he's gonna interview here in a couple of weeks. I'm excited to see how well he does and I hope I can find him a job assignment, put him on and, and get him tried out and get him out there working. But establishing programs in your guys' community is very important, you know? We wanna, you know, and I reached out to you guys, you know, I knew you guys' high school was right up the street and you guys are right here. So, you know, I contacted you guys and said, let's, let's get something going, let's get it in your guys' district. Let's create something toward these, these young kids can know where to go and where to apply and create the path. I know not every student's gonna come down and apply and become an electrician, but at least those students, you know, are, are there. Yeah. And your guys' uh, the Teacher of the Year Award, awesome. The one thing that uh, that struck me was that she mentioned her husband had to go all the way to LA to work. You know, that's, that's tough and I understand that. And that's why I'm hoping to, to help out, is give these students an opportunity to work right here and not have to go those distances, you know? So anyways, I'm excited to work with you guys, we've got another cohort going. And uh, I appreciate you guys just having us there and I plan on sticking to you guys' district for, for quite a while. Even whether you guys do a community benefits agreement or not, I'm gonna be there for you guys and create pathways for you.
Ms. Medina?
Yes, I, I, I had a question with regards to, what is it, once a student graduates from high school? I know that for some unions or some of the apprenticeship program, there's a gap. So then I, I wanted to find out, what is the minimum for IBW as an example for you to um, move them into the next level right after high school? Is there a minimum a, age, is it um?
Absolutely, so, you know, any type of uh, apprentice applying for the apprenticeship needs to be 18 years older. You know, have a high school diploma or GED, so I could work with your adult education. But they need to also have a C or better in algebra and that's what we look for, is those qualifications cause we're early in math and, you know, you know, dealing with electrical calculation, the conduit bending. It's important they have the math skills. But since they're going through our program and utilizing our first-year curriculum, your guys' students, I'm, I'm taking that in account that they're doing our curriculum in class, that I'm allowing them to move on to an interview, that they won't have to take that actual applicant test. And they've done a hands-on course, they know what they're getting into. And that's usually the biggest dropout reason that people drop from apprenticeship. We have about 20% drop rate and the reason of that is cause they don't know what they're getting into. So, having the students know what apprenticeship is, how to apply, the, the trade they're getting into, and give them the life skills in the classroom, so that way when they go home and they look around, they see the plugs and the lights, they know how it all works and they create that interest. But they just need those requirements in, in order to actually apply, those basic ones. But we will let them skip an interview and, I mean, skip the math test and, and go right to interview.
Thank you for doing that because I know that that's also very important. How do we continue that pipeline uh, into these great opportunities for good-paying jobs at the end of the day, where they can sustain themselves and their families, so, and stay within San Bernardino? So thank you, I appreciate that.
Ms. Grande?
Thank you. I was reminded recently, cause we were driving on the, on the freeway and back of a big um, truck. Uh, and it was uh, they were advertising their business to do home repairs, et cetera. And it said, handywoman.us. So I wanna make sure that we, we make sure that uh, these opportunities are open to all students and to perhaps even show images of uh, boy, um, you know, both male and female um, students on, on something to make sure it's indicate that it's friendly to that. And I, I think I've al- you've already answered me before that it is friendly, so I would like to see those, those numbers. So no, we mean it, really, you know? Because there are many girls uh, that love to wield hammers and pick up saws. My, my own mother was one, she made, she made furniture, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely, no, women's been a, a tough challenge for any of the uh, the trades, really. You know, I think, you know, roughly set around 2 or 3% only of women applying for the program. And I think a lot of it has to do with the industry itself, you know? You drive around construction site, not a lot of women wanna work on that. But we're starting to see an increase of, of women being successful in this trade and that seems to attract more women. And lately, I've been um, actually started a program with our school called a Wire Program with another um, representative from Riverside Local. And what they've done is recruit women in general to put them into a cohort. And we just ran a uh, a 13 uh, individual pilot program, 13 girls completed a program similar like what you guys' youth is. And they all came and they, they interviewed this summer. And, and we actually just brought one of them in uh, this week. I was able to call her up and, and give her, give her position in the apprenticeship. So that was exciting to see someone go through our, what's called a Wire Program, so women, you know? And anyhow, but yeah, we do have a women recruitment program and it's going well, you know? So we do try to set up multiple pathways, I wanna be in the high schools, wanna have a women program. We're even starting a um, program for recent incarcerated individuals that we're providing a pipeline of them. So I wanna make sure we're within the community. And that's the biggest thing that I think the hurdle like, with the, with IBW and stuff, that, you know, we haven't been enough into the community, we kinda, we don't have a recruitment problem. You know, my applications fill up in, in 30 minutes, you know, I have 100 applicants applying. And I think we need to rip the pipelines in the right direction and make the jobs count to where the community's in the most.
Ms. Applegate?
Thank you, President, gentlemen. Gentlemen, I just wanna say thank you so much because I am the Assistant Super Ed Services and my team is extremely um, proud and they're commending you on your work and your dedication to our students. Your curriculum is fantastic and we thank you for the opportunities. And actually, Board, you're gonna be invited to the next meeting um, because yes, we are gonna be uh, having a committee come together. But in the meantime, we were gonna invite our Board members to your next meeting so they can kinda see what's, what's taking place. And we're really excited, Board, to also let you know, cause some of you have inquired, that we are trying to tailor our pathways more to some of those opportunities you're talking about and expanding into other sectors, so that our students have that pre-apprenticeship um, opportunity to then be able to come into full apprenticeship with you. So thank you so much for your work. We're aligning our pathways with what you guys are doing and so much more, so we can have these opportunities for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thanks guys.
Thank you.
And that's the end of our public comments, 6.1. Uh, section 7, closed session. Do we have any closed session in public comments? Do we? Who was that? We did, we did three.
Edwin Delgado. Good evening, Board. Su- uh, Superintendent, President, Board members. My name is Edwin Delgado and I'm here representing Fifth District Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. And I'm just here wanting to introduce um, to you our Fifth District Youth Advisory Council. This is our second cohort and we're excited to get it going again. Uh, applications are open until August 30th and we're inviting students. Last year, we had great participation from this school district and we're looking forward to having more students from somebody in the City Unified represent their schools, represent this district. Well, we had three Board members, student Board members, uh, attend our Youth Advisory Council meetings. And this year, what's most exciting and what we're very excited for is that we're offering a scholarship to these students uh, that are going to uh, pursue a second education, second year education. This is uh, council that allows them to challenge themselves and learn about uh, community service, learn about uh, government responsibility. And we wanted to make sure that we share with all our school districts in our community and we look forward to seeing students from this school district participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Husky?
Delgado, where do they get the application for the council? And can you share that with us and maybe with Ms. Post so we can share it with our Student Leadership Advisory and our Board members?
That's a great question, yes. You, you can find it on our website and also on our social media pages. Um, there is a, a link uh, to apply and I will make sure to s- share it with our, our district representatives um, so that they can have a copy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham, do we have any public comments for closed session?
No, we do not.
At this time, we'll go to closed session. Call the meeting back to order? Section 8, Action Reported from Closed Session. 8.1, Claim 66177. Be resolved, Board Education approves settlement authorization for claim number 616177 in the amount of $40,000. Motion, please?
Second.
Moved by uh, Ms. Husky, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please? For my student Board members, when I have items that um, are legal in nature, in nature, I don't involve, ask you guys for a vote, okay? Cause legally, uh, it wouldn't be proper. Thank you. Motion carried? 8.2, Lift Readmittive Expulsion of Students. Be resolved, Board Education authorizes the readmission of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to school to the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the Board Rules and Regulations and in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900. Go move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, and second by Ms. Husky. Vote, please? Motion carried? 8.3, Petition to Expel Rescind Ceiling of Record or Modified Youth Court Expulsion? You understand the motion?
Motion.
Go move. Moved by Dr. Wyatt?
As amended, right?
Right, as amended, seconded by Ms. Medina. And I believe it's amended in the item already. Right, Ms. Cunningham?
Yes.
Pretty lined up. Vote, please? Motion carried? 8.1. We did 8.1, sorry about that. 8.4. And then, section 9. 9.1. Student Board Members. We'll start with Ms. Avila. Ms. Avila?
Evening.
Oh, sorry about that, Mr. Avila, my bad, Mr. Avila.
Uh, greetings on this hot Tuesday. My name is Wilver Avila, I am a senior and, and I attend Indian Springs High School. Things that I am grateful for is the T- is, one, I want to give a huge shout-out to a teacher that has been very supportive of a bunch of students and that teacher is Mr. Chirms from, that is a history teacher. He has, s- he has been there for so many students and he has worked so hard and also done stuff behind the scenes to be able to give students materials that they need to live, like, toothpaste, toothbrushes, combs, and all other materials like that. And I just wanna give a huge shout-out to him.
What school is he at?
Indian Springs.
Thank you.
And then, uh, events that are happening is that on, eh, on the 22nd, at Indian Springs, we're gonna have our first home varsity football game and our back-to-school night. And what I gotten from other schools is that Sierra is gonna have a ribbon-cutting and family fun night on the 28th. And lastly, uh, Pacific High School is also gonna have a back-to-school night on the 22nd. And what, uh, one aspect that is, that I am looking forward to for SHINES is safe, secure, and attractive learning environments and facilities. And with the, with the teachers that give good environments and nice and all caring environments, it's going quite well, is from what I've experienced. And that is all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Avila, great report. Ms. Alzatma?
Good evening, I'm Camille Alzatma and I attend San Bernardino High School as a 12th grader. Um, before I go on with my report, I'd like to give thanks to start off the school year. So I'd like to thank our San Bernardino Unified School District for being a family and a home for so many students that either don't have a safe family or home and also just being a family and home for those who do. Um, I think it's very important what all the teachers do and what the Board does to create such a safe environment. So, I'd like to start with the thanks to that. Um, in other news, um, San Bernardino is also having their first varsity football game of the season this Thursday. So, if anybody would like to come out to support, we'd really appreciate it. Um, Middle College and San Bernardino are also getting ready to have their club rush and so the freshmen and all the cl- um, students are really excited to see what we have going on for the upcoming school year and to get stuff started for the school year. And carrying over from last year, um, a program that us, me and a lot of other students feel really works is tardy sweeps that started at San Bernardino. We were having really bad tardy issues and absence issues. And tardy sweeps have really helped um, clean up the hallways during passing period and make sure students are getting ti- class on time and in class and present. And I think it really um, aligns with our district's push for safe and secure and attractive learning environments. So I'm really glad that we're continuing those into the new year.
Thank you, another great report. Ms. Gallardo?
Good evening, my name is Fernanda Gallardo and I am a senior who attends Arroyo Valley High School. I would like to thank all the teachers and faculty members who have warmly welcomed students back into school for a new and exciting year. I am thankful for the opportunity to be here in representation of my school and for the resources provided to me as a SBCUSD student. Currently, at Arroyo Valley High School, we are, we are, we had our school-wide expectations assembly where the importance of embracing honor, achievement, willingness, and kindness was emphasized. We have focused on our safety system and we have applied the tardy sweep policy, which helps ensure students attend class. We are also currently NWEA testing in both math and English for the next two weeks. And at Cajon, they are having their back-to-school night tomorrow and they are having their freshman tailgate and their first football game of the year this Friday. Excitingly, their homecoming theme has been announced and it is Alice in Wonderland. And at Middle College, they just had their picture day and they are currently preparing for their annual club rush on August 30th and their senior sunrise on September 29th. On, one aspect of SHINES that is personally important to me is SBCUSD strong. This aspect enforces the importance of being academically, physically, socially, emotionally, and financially strong. Our district provides the support required to attain the strength different res- through different resources. For example, our different college preparation programs provide the help and resources required to follow the college path, especially for low-income and first-generation students. Thank you.
Another great report, thank you very much. That brings us to section 10, Action Items. 10.1, Personal Report.
As presented?
Go move.
Moved by Ms. Husky and second by Scott Wyatt. Moved by Ms. Medina. And second by Dr. Wyatt, I think Ms. Medina got her puppet thing going over there. But uh, vote, please? I, I'm assuming you said as, did you say as presented, um, okay. Okay. Motion carried. Ten point two, resolution of board education of the San Bernardino Cityified School District supports Proposition Two, kindergarten through grade twelve schools and local community colleges, public education facilities, modernization, repair, and safety bond act. The move, and second? No, it hasn't been seconded.
Okay. Again.
Moved by Mr. Husky, second by Mrs. Alexander. Vote, please. Mr. Avila?
Aye.
Ms. Elzapa, Elzatma?
Aye.
And Ms. Gallardo?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent items. Entertaining motion?
Moved. Again.
Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Ms. Sabios. Any to pull?
No, second none.
Hearing none. Vote, please. Motion carried, section twelve, reports, comments by union organizations. Twelve point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association?
No report.
Twelve point two, California School Employees Association?
No report.
Twelve point three, Communication Workers of America?
No report.
Twelve point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association?
No report.
Section thirteen, mandated policy revisions. Thirteen point one, approval of board policy emergency schedules. Entertaining motion?
Again.
Moved by Mrs. Alexander, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please.
I do have a comment really quickly. So this is regarding the, the policy subcommittee. If there's a way that even if it comes to the board, if they can at least let us know which ones are the ones that are coming up before it comes, in case we do have some suggestions, because even though it comes through this, let's, for example, California School Boards Association. Sometimes we've had to make additions to the language so that way we can make sure that we're being inclusive for all of our students. This is not one of those examples, but if we can, just at least let us know, and we don't have to necessarily have a meeting, but you could probably just attach it to, before it comes.
Well, it's, the process is built into it. Usually, there's a first reading and a second reading. Is this the first reading?
This is under-mandated, so we only need the one reading.
Only need, you could do two, but for most of the other policies we have, it's two readings.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what I'm, I guess what I'm referring to is, you're right, you're right. We can have that, but if they can just do the courtesy of just maybe just letting us know for those policy subcommittee. But you're right, we would be able to read it here.
Because the way it would happen, you get the first reading. You don't have to bring up your objections then, but you definitely have the policy before the next meeting when we do the second reading. And most of them are first and second reading.
Even for like the ones that, as right now, the mandated ones, sometimes they, we remove, in the past, when Dr. Flores and I were a part of it, the state or even other, you know, like California School Board Association would ask us to update the language, mandated language, but because it removes certain protections for certain students, we wanted to make sure there was still language incorporated with, not that we're not adding it, but add additional language to, to provide protections to our students. So that's why, even though it's mandated, if they can just at least let us know, even if it's for the first, even if it's like right now, this example, we're, we're not, it's not a first reading or second reading.
Question, when you say let you know.
Send us an email, just to, even with the attachments, if it's not where, because typically, we would meet once a month, but lately, we haven't been meeting once a month just to look at the policies. This would help at least if they sent us an email showing these are the ones coming up to the board, to the policy subcommittee.
To the, okay.
To the policy subcommittee.
President Tillman, if I can just add maybe for clarification. So the mandated policies, you are correct. You can add certain things to mandated policies, we can't take away. So that, that is one that we don't have to go to second read, and I know that, that you're aware of that. So we can probably in an update tell you it's coming so that you can see it. The other ones, the ones that go to two reads are the ones that the subcommittee actually looks at and adds to and changes and does everything that they want to do. The mandated ones are pretty much listed the way that they, I think there was an exception one time because we missed a group of students, I believe, and so we can add that to the mandated one. That's not an issue. But we can do that on a Friday to let, let you know that it's coming so that you can see it.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Sabios?
Just for my clarification on that same question. Which ones are considered first reading and which ones have a potential for a second reading? How do we differentiate those two?
Mandated ones, because it's law and we have to approve them, we just do those as a first reading. When we do just changes, like if somebody's just updating or adding something, those go to the policy subcommittee, we do a first and a second reading on those. We haven't had any because no one's sent me anything other than the mandated ones lately, so that's why.
Okay, thank you.
So for clarification, all non-mandated policies go to the subcommittee first anyway? So I guess, Ms. Medina, you just asking for the ones that are mandated?
Are mandated, yeah, and that doesn't have the, the first or second reading.
Okay. Section fourteen, fourteen point one, board members' report. I hope I find somebody who's ready. Mrs. Alexander?
Well, good evening. I just have a few items that I wanted to report out on. With this being the beginning of the school year, I know we received a great report from our pathways program, but I think it would be good for them to come back and explain how our students even allocated to certain leak-learning programs, and how are we tracking as it relates to our purposeful pathways? Because I believe there is some streamlining that was going to take place in terms of our programming. And then focusing, what are we doing with STEM? You know, we did receive the, the golden ribbon, but that I would just like for us to come back and really highlight our success there. So that's a request. The other one is reference to our homeless and foster youth. There were numbers that we reported out, I guess, beginning of the year, and we need to really come back and share what we're doing to take care of our unhoused population and our foster youth. And how do we collaborate with the city when it comes to taking care of our students, but really their families too? And then, lastly, I wanted to say happy birthday to Ms. Emma. She's turned a hundred years, years old at the Villas. I had an opportunity to meet her about two weeks ago, and she gave some advice for students, and her advice was for our scholars to sit down and listen. And she said that exact words. So anyway, so lastly, congratulations to the two teachers that received Teacher of the Year. Super proud of you, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Medina?
Great. I, yeah, same thing. I want to congratulate the teachers, and as well as the, the speeches. I mean, you know, they were amazing. They, they really inspired, and you felt, you know, the individuals in our school district, how passionate they are for our students, and it was really inspiring. And I'm glad that we had this at the board meeting because others can also hear. And I, and I imagine there's many teachers, many staff members, many employees in our school district who feels the same way. So I, I'm really excited to have that presented to us earlier today. I did want to kind of clarify, there was a request, I think it was several board meetings ago, when I, when, there's two kind of like, one, that request was to try to get the career pathways and have the apprenticeship program, pre-apprenticeship program into a sub, or a committee, so that way we can work on that, and try to get more unions and more different entities involved. That's one. So what I'm kind of pushing now, or trying to ask for the board for consensus, is to look at creating, or even to meet with the facility subcommittee. I know that we have a facility subcommittee, and to try to have the board meet with regards to the, I wrote it down here, the, the community workforce agreement. And I do love the points that when you look at increasing the amount of local businesses, small businesses, businesses that look at those minority individuals such as women, black and brown folks, that business owners and so forth. And then also bringing contracts that employ individuals within our region. So I at least would like to receive a consensus to, to try to have the board meet during the facility subcommittee, have those conversations, they did provide us with a sample that they even mentioned. It's something that they're just suggesting, doesn't mean that we have to grab everything from here, but at least we start the conversation. And I know I've been pushing for this for several years now, and I think it's a great opportunity just to have those conversations. And so I would like to try to see if we can have the consensus of having the facility subcommittee meet and try to have conversations regarding this.
Do they meet now?
We haven't met in, in a while, so.
Facility subcommittee?
Yeah.
So let's schedule a meeting for the facility subcommittee.
On the subject.
On the subject.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Abiles Grande?
Oh, thank you. Well, I had a really wonderful morning this, today earlier. I had a co-annus meeting, I was honored to have met our new president for San Bernardino Valley College, Dr. Gilbert Contreras. If you hadn't had an opportunity to meet him, let me know, I'll, I'll make it happen. And so he's just a wonderful person, he's, he's full of passion and love and heart for, for his job, and it comes through clearly, and he's very excited about his new role here. And Dr., newly, Dr., our, our outgoing chancellor, Diana Rodriguez, yes, Diana, sorry. Diana Rodriguez was so excited to introduce him, and she just recently, this past semester, obtained, finally obtained her PhD. So she is celebrating, isn't that cool? And so it was a very wonderful morning. Also, another event too that just happened, I went to visit Cajon High School and speak to our principal, Christopher Jackson, he's just a live-wire, so great. On behalf of Rotary, they're restarting the Rotary Light Club there with his, with his support, full support and agreement in it, and they're starting, I think, with the, not the freshman class yet, but the sophomore, junior. And it, and we have a really dynamite teacher that will take on that role, her name is Brittany Guillory, so shout out to Brittany. She's a sports, I forgot her exact title, but she's gonna make that happen, and she's all excited about really getting the the students involved in community service and all of the recognitions that are going along with it. And I believe they have like a speech contest, and it's run, and then they, they they have a, they hold a camp, a two-and-a-half-day camp up in the mountains where they learn fellowship, et cetera, like that. So I'm excited to see what that is, and, and I was, I'm like an unofficial official person there because I, I'm a school board member, and so they wanted me there. So I was very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sabios?
Thank you so much. So I first want to start by also just congratulating our wonderful teachers that we celebrated earlier. I absolutely love their speeches, and, you know, just so, so very proud of, of them and, you know, having them in our district. So again, thank you so much to them and their families, and, you know, thank you to Ms. Goodwin and, you know, Superintendent and the rest of our cabinet for really taking the time to, you know, celebrate them here as well. On a slightly different note, I, I wanted to check in, I, I know it's been a while. Back in twenty twenty-two, the Justice Department, along with San Bernardino City Unified School District, you know, came to an agreement with a settlement, agreement for our English Language Learners Department. I don't think we've gotten an update on that. Okay, awesome. And I don't think we've gotten a presentation in a long time as well in terms of that particular department as well. Okay, awesome. You guys are, you guys are honored. That was it, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple announcements that we saw. Our teen music workshop, also known as Soul Point, was selected to perform at our upcoming SB, CSBA AEC conference in December, so looking forward to that. And again, the amazing performances they always put on. And like my colleagues have said many a times this evening, congratulations to our San Bernardino City Unified School District County Teachers of the Year, Ms. Hernandez and Ms. Brown, great job. And again, wonderful speeches, you're right, they were, that's a good thing too, though, because when you go and compete for state, you also have to be quite the eloquent speaker and presenter, almost like a salesperson, so they do it naturally, which is really nice. So good luck to them on state. Then we had a, a visit from Attorney General Rob, Rob Bonta recently, who came out and did a little presentation, and so, you know, thank you to him and his office for coming out. So if you didn't know, happy birthday to our SBTA president, Ashley Akala. Today is her birthday, so if you haven't had a chance to tell her, happy birthday to her. And then a real big shout out to our MOT folks, Tom Pace, who I see out in the crowd, Mr. Pace, and Toby Bushy, Principal Ms. Martinez, and Mr. Sean Jones for opening up Marshall Elementary School on the weekend on very short notice. It was like twenty-four-hour notice or less, so we could have a town hall meeting with our folks that were victims of the Edgehill Fire. We had a, an amazing turnout, actually, in a very short period of time. Ms. Senator Chobo was there, as well as Assembly Member Ramos went and did a walk-through with them as well. County Board Supervisor Joe Baca Jr., who was here. Our, our mayor, obviously, was there. Councilman Alexander was there, as well as our colleague, Ms. Alexander. So it was really nice to have them both there, supporting our, our neighbors, really. And then also Sheriff Cheyenne Dykes came out, as well as Chief Muncie from the Fire Department, and Deputy Chiefs Serna and Jaeger. So just want to say thank you to everybody that, that came out. It was a very emotional meeting. Obviously, a number of our neighbors lost their homes completely, five of them, and then three more also severely damaged. So, you know, it's time to do the rebuilding phase and, and the healing phase. But again, it was an amazing turnout by our community. You know, I wanted it to be very discreet because of the sensitivity of it, and everybody respected that, did a pretty darn good job of doing that, and just really being there for them. And I, I really got to compliment the Fire Department, County Fire Department, for, you know, going out there and taking ownership of everything. They, they're ones that don't make excuses, they just say, you know, we're out there to do the best job we can. And, you know, a lot of folks don't realize it, but they saved up to a hundred homes. Like I said, that was the most aggressive fire I've ever seen in twenty-six years. And so we did lose homes, but at the same time, we saved a lot of homes. But again, to our MOT folks and our, our school site leadership, they didn't hesitate, they were there, and again, they support our community, and that's what it's all about. And Mr. Ariano, thank you, because I know I contacted you, and, and you made a few phone calls and made that happen, so thank you, sir.
Dr. Wyatt, Mr. Husky?
Evening, everyone, and I hope everyone's had a great hot start to this school year. Did you like that one?
No.
No, okay. Anyway, I also want to say my kudos to our Teachers of the Year, Ms. Bowen and Ms. Hernandez. I was able to attend both of their surprises, and the kids were excited that were there to witness them, you know, and the, the families, the teachers, the staff. It was just so exciting and so wonderful for Brown and, and Golden Valley. And as a former Knight, I'm extra proud. I wanted to inquire, I heard from Ms. Phillips. She's the teacher of the dental, the pathway at Cajon High School, and she sent me a picture because I've been really all about that, that dental pathway and kind of excited to see it, it getting up and going in another way for our students to, you know, graduate with a, with a job, or a pathway to a job. And I was just wondering- And I was just wondering if we were planning, because I hadn't heard anything about a ribbon cutting or a ceremony. I know we've done it for some of our other thing. And so I was just kind of wanting to know if we're, if we're looking at that and when so we could get it on our calendars, myself in particular, because I'm, I'm super excited about that and I just can't wait to see it. It looks, from the pictures, it looks fabulous, but I want to wait till it's all done before I actually, you know, go see it. We met to start planning, Ms. Rogers is joining us on our, she's here tonight, but she's joining us on our, with our Slack program and also helping with our student board members for the next month. So I want to welcome her to the, the student board member team. She'll be working with Ms. Post and, and myself, and so I'm really excited to have her and are planning for that. To that end, we received a, a letter that, from the governor, talking about mitigating cell phone use in schools. And I would like to see us refer, or I'm not, you know, I don't know if refers the right word, but engage our student leadership advisory committee and our student board members in really looking at the cell phone, our cell phone policies and the impact of cell phones and maybe letting them do some of the research and take the lead, since we have this incredible Student Voice program. And let them come up with how we're going to comply with the intent of, of Governor Newsom's cell phone policies. And then the last thing I just wanted to say is kind of off, I, on Saturday, I went out to the Rose Bowl to see the Archie Griffin statue unveiling, which was really exciting to see him. I got like up at close, I didn't get to actually take a picture with him, but I, I was like this close to him. But it just made me think about our Jaden Daniels and I just, you know, that he's going to be starting for the commanders and I'm just really excited because like, like I just, like in, in that moment, I saw like that progression of, you know, Jaden from first year football player to football icon and, and humanitarian and just all around good person that I saw there. And so I just wanted to mention that and wish our Jaden and our Alexander Madison a great year and, because I know they'll do us proud. And that's it.
Thank you very much. I think the policy kind of struck me, it said, the cell phone policy for in classroom. And right now, we don't allow cell phone use in the classroom, right? Did I read that wrong?
Unless the teacher allows it.
What I'm saying, in the, in that letter from the governor, it said to respond to in-classroom cell phone use. But we already have policies saying you don't use a cell phone in the classroom. So I don't know how that would.
Unless directed by the teacher.
Right. So I don't know how that would change. Now, what has happened is other districts are going to a larger extent, like LA Unified said, started in January, cell phones be banned totally on campus, right? So that's the big question. Not so much of what you're going to do with it in the classroom, this is already banned. It doesn't mean that you don't have violations of students, bring them out, that's what causes the problem. So the big question for us, I think, is going to be if we're going to move forward, saying we're going to do like LA Unified and ban cell phone use. But I agree, we should have a committee.
My request is not a committee, it's to send it to the Student Leadership Advisory Council and the, and our student board members and let them take the issue on this year.
That's a committee.
And let them bring us, let our student board members bring us back a recommendation based on, let them do the research, let them, I mean, we've got representatives from all our high schools, let them do the work on it and bring it back up.
All four, get input, we can do that. But at some point, we're going to address the issue, we're going to address the issue with that input. I'm not saying one way or the other. All right, that's fine. And then I want to thank our student board members just for the great statements tonight and then the value that you guys add by being on the board with us, I appreciate it. I was talking to Ms. Elzatma this morning and, I mean, at the beginning of the meeting, she mentioned that, that the air conditioning was out at one of the buildings at Sangagonio at the start of the year. And I know it's critical for the air conditioning to be working in these times of, this heat, right? And then I, I really think we should look at statistically, how high the temperatures are and do we have a concern about continuing to start school this early in August? So I'm looking for board consensus to say, should we look at that in terms of the impact of the heat? And if we were to move it further out, would it be less heat? I know in the old schedule, when it went into June, you had to deal with the heat in June, right? But I don't know was, is the heat in June more extensive than the heat in August? And, and I guess if we could somehow measure how bad the heat is, we need to look at that. Just talking to the student board members, you can just see the exhaustion on their face from being in the heat. And it was 109 degrees. And, you know, I've been in air conditioning all day, from the house to the car, so I, I avoid the heat, so. That's what I'm saying. So we need to, we need to look at that.
Billy, should this be?
I go off early in the morning and I go off at Huntington Beach where it's cool, cool ocean breeze. And then thank you to all the hard work by all the district employees. It's just beautiful to see all the students going to school, going to practice, just, this rich environment that we are able to provide our students. And all the buses going here and, and far, I think we have a, a beautiful system right now. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Ariano.
Excuse me, President Tillman. Did we get consensus to agendize that discussion about starts of school?
No, no, it wasn't a, it was just to get information in terms of how hot it is and do we think we should look at even having a discussion about changing the calendar year to a later start.
Okay, so no agendizing anything then?
No, after he gets back, he can put in the Friday update and based on that, we can decide what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, President Tillman. So first of all, I just, I too want to thank the student board members for your positive comments today, for sharing the information that you're gleaning from your school sites and other school sites. And then more importantly, thank you for referencing the multi-year vision. I appreciate that you, you have read it, you've seen it, and you're applying it, the relevance to your everyday experience at school. So thank you very much and I appreciate very much that you're aware of our vision and, and you're seeing it in action. So thank you for that. I want to thank the Board of Education too. I know many times people underestimate the conversations that we have and I'm just very proud of this board. And I want the board to know that I love when the board asks questions, whether it's an open session or in closed sessions, because the reality is questions make us better, right? So thank you for the brave conversations and for the honest conversations, because when we get a different perspective of either district operations or philosophies, when we have these honest conversations, we all get better. So I just want to say thank you for that, for, for your honesty all the time. And third of all, I want to wish Ashley Akala a happy birthday today. And she was actually at a board meeting at a, on her birthday. So appreciate her being here, but wishing her a very happy birthday. And then today is National Latina Day, so I just wanted to shout out that day today, because I know we have very many Latinas in our, in our school district, students, staff, and their contributions is powerful. So to my daughters too, happy, happy National Latina Day. So if we could have the PowerPoint up, please. Oh, and before we get to that, just real quick, I wanted to respond. The board had asked us several months ago to put together a schedule of presentations for the board on different topics. So some of the topics that you brought up today have been put on the schedule. I believe we had already put them in a Friday update, but just for the sake of the questions today, the CTE presentation is scheduled for April 1st. But if you want that sooner, we can talk about that and see how it fits into the schedule. The homeless information is scheduled for October 22nd, homeless and foster kid information. So, and then the DOJ presentation is scheduled for September. So we, we had taken all the topics that you had asked us and kind of lined it up, also with how the data is released by the district or by the state. So Felicia, I'll, I'll connect with you to see if maybe there's a, an alternative that we can do other than the broad ones. So thank you for that. So I just want to start by thanking Amrita Ray from IEHP and the work that she does in conjunction with Colleen Williams, putting together this vaccine and sports physical clinic for our kids. Over 200 kids came to this last event so that they could be prepared to come to school and prepared to be engaged in our sports activities, which is a big part of our multi-year vision, which is bolstering student success with our community collaboration. So thank you, Amrita and IEHP and Colleen for your collaboration and helping kids. Next slide. And a very special thanks to Joe Baca Jr. for the backpack and school T-shirt giveaway that he did at Vermont Elementary. He's been very supportive of our students and the needs of our students. So I really appreciated him being there, giving every single kid a backpack and a custom Vermont T-shirt so that kids could be proud at school. So again, another example of bolstering our student success with collaborations. Next slide. And I just wanted to share another school that I, I've been doing my school visits now. This past week, I was able to attend High Pack, San Andreas and Cole Elementary. So I wanted to share with you the paint job at Cole Elementary, all the redos of the planters to make them look nice, neat and tidy. And you'll see the umbrellas, Terry did me a, a favor of buying umbrellas for most of the tables at all of our schools so that we could provide a little more shade for kids. So Terry and his team actually went out and drilled holes into the tables, because we had not purchased the tables that were umbrella ready. So his team went out, drilled the holes, put the umbrellas. So another example of our schools looking attractive and, and for our students and for the community. So both High Pack and San Andreas off to great starts. Teacher's doing a good job, classrooms looking good. As I do my visits, Terry knows, I, I immediately text him with a few things that I see that need fixing on our campuses, because we want our campuses to be the very best. But I thank Terry and his staff because they're always coming up big to making sure that our campuses are clean and attractive. So Cole Elementary is looking great. Next slide. And I know it's been mentioned today, but Carla Hernandez, Lori Bowen and to her family and to their teams, congratulations once again for the great impact that they're having on kids. I always think about Dr. Victor Rios, who was one of our summer speakers, and he always says that school has to be a combination of high love and high expectations. And Carla and Lori are those teachers that provide high love and high expectations. And I think you felt their passion, but also the rigor that they expect their kids to meet every day in their classroom. So congratulations to them. And like I said, I hope they both win. That'd be, hey, if they won both county teachers, they can both win state teachers of the year, right? You got to be positive. Next slide. Another thanks to some of our elected officials, Joe Baca Jr. and Mayor Helen Tran. They've been working the last couple of years with our folks in the district to put a streetlight and crosswalk on Fifth and Pendley. If you've been on that street before, that's, people, cars are coming and families and kids are trying to cross that street at 8:30 in the morning when school starts and then later in the afternoon. So a year and a half later, that streetlight is in and I want to thank them for their always listening to our needs. I put that one picture of us walking on the crosswalk on social media and of course, everybody started making the Abbey Road jokes with the Beatles, right? So, but anyway, thanks, thanks to them, because as we talked to a few families that were coming to school that morning when we hit the switch, they were so appreciative. One family, a mother, said she had had six kids go to that school over the course of the last 12 years. And for 12 years, she had always wished for that light and here it is. So thanks to our, our partners. Next slide. One thing came up that President Tillman shared with me and I, I wanted to share with the Board of Education and just reassure the board that we have re-engaged our principals and sent out information to our teachers. SB 291 was a law that was passed recently that mandates that students have 30 minutes of mandatory recess each day, 15 minutes if it's a, if it's a partial day. This is aimed mostly at elementary. So we wanted to make sure that the board knew, because some of our teachers accidentally, when they were sending out their parent welcome books, still had some of the old language about using recess as a disciplinary matter and the law doesn't allow it. So thanks to Mr. Tillman for bringing that forward to me. A parent brought that out. So Amy Coker immediately put together a memo, reminded the principals about this law so that the principals could remind the teachers and the teachers were appreciative of that reminder. But I wanted to reassure the Board of Education that we have sent that out again to make sure that we are honoring the law. So President Tillman, thanks for bringing that up. Next slide. Oh, and by the way, the law does include you cannot take away a student's recess for disciplinary, so they are mandated to have that 30 minute period. I want to share with the board too, that every year I put together a series of what I call superintendent objectives for principals. And the nine that I have this year, you see before, and I want to talk a little bit about each one so that you as a board would know what I'm focusing on, as well as the other things that we have already established. So I want the board and the community to know that we're still focused on preschool, third grade reading proficiency, fifth grade math complexity, ninth grade algebra success, writing across the curriculum in grades K through eight, providing STEM experiences for grades K through eight at all of our schools, which includes computer science, programming and robotics and coding. So those things are still a priority. But on top of that, I'm working with the, the school principals, A, to make sure that we are engaging our students in the activities that we have. I know the board members here have often said how it was important to make sure the kids are involved in sports, the kids are involved in extracurricular activities. That is what creates school pride and a sense of belonging. So we are working with our principals to make sure that they're implementing all the strategies possible to create school pride, but also enhance the number of kids that are engaged in activities that connect them to school. As you also know, I'm very focused on theater, choir and marching bands. So you'll see, that's another one of my objectives this year is really building our VAPA programs, especially at the high school. We see the numbers dwindle from elementary to middle school when they get to high school. So that's another one that we'll be talking about. Customer service, I want to thank Dr. Mark, Marcus Funches. He and his team have put together the customer service committee. They met today for the first time, where they're going to put together a comprehensive product that we will use across the district in terms of how we interface and interact with our, with our customers. And it'll be hopefully including some training or some strategies on how do you diffuse situations when people come in with concerns so that we don't add to the energy that may be negative, but really have an empathetic ear, listen and try to help parents. So Marcus, thank you for putting that community together and I look forward to the final product in the next couple of months that you will roll out. We're continuing to focus to make sure that our campuses are clean and that they're jewels of the community. Cole, an example, I walked through the classrooms at Cole and like one of our student board members, every classroom looked fantastic, right? And I appreciate the attention to detail. So this is something that we're doing across the entire district is to make sure that our classes are not cluttered, that there's ample space for the kids and the teachers to interact and work in collaborative groups and have nice, clean spaces to learn in. So I appreciate the principal's attention. I've also let the high school and middle school principals know that I'm going to be very focused on our PE programs. You know, in our, in our community, it's important, and our vision speaks this, that we want our kids to have healthy lifestyles, not only just now, but in the future and to learn what those healthy habits are. So we want to make sure that our kids are truly being active at the middle school and high school levels, that they are learning healthy strategies that can be done at home that don't, don't necessarily have to go to a gym, that they're learning how to eat healthy at home, that it doesn't have to be expensive food to eat healthy. So we'll be very focused on our PE programs this year to make sure that kids are not opting out, but that they're being encouraged to understand why PE is equally important as to English, Spanish, or writing, or science, or the arts. So we'll be very focused on that. Why? Because when you read about communities where there is higher levels of poverty, you have childhood obesity and high numbers of di, you know, diabetes, child diabetes. So these are the things that we can start to mitigate and teach the kids now to be healthy, which is part of our multi-year vision. We're also going to be focused We're also going to be focused on our intervention programs. Anna and her team have done a great job of putting together such as our learning centers at the elementary. I know we're working on reading recovery measures for those students at the middle schools that perhaps are not reading proficient. So we are making sure that we are using all the resources available to us to make sure that those intervention programs are truly effective and kids are not stuck in the cycle of intervention. You know, we all agree that first best instruction is the best instruction. So we want to make sure that we're not keeping kids forever in intervention mode. And so I do appreciate the attention. And Anna, thank you for all the work that you and your team have been doing. We're also very focused on restorative practices, making sure that we're not kicking kids out, that we want kids in, and that we're taking every step possible other than anything that affects the safety of the environment of school to make sure that kids remain in school and that we're adopting this philosophy of restorative practices. So that is something that our principals are learning and working through this year with all the support that we have. And of course, the last thing is being intentional that my objective on African-American student achievement is still real, is still relevant, and is still important. And so these are the objectives that we will be working with as a team this year. So as I do visits, as the evaluators work with the principals as part of their evaluation, these are nine areas that we were going to be talking about consistently throughout the year. So we're very excited about this school year. I think we're very focused. And you'll see some of the results when we start talking about data, that the data is pointing us in the right direction. The challenge that we have is we need to make those gains at a larger pace than we did in this last year. But we think the systems are in place to get us those results moving forward. So good things happening in San Bernardino, and that's what I have for today, President Tillman. Thank you.
Mr. Ariano. Section 15, summary of board requests, 15.1, review of requests.
Good evening. The first request is from Ms. Rosales Medina. She requested to let the Board Policy Subcommittee know ahead of time by attaching the changes of mandated policy revisions via email. The second request is from Mrs. Alexander. She requested for our CTE pathways to come back and explain our pathways, how students are learning our purposeful pathways, what they're doing to receive the golden ribbon, and highlight our success. This is scheduled for a forthcoming board meeting. Mrs. Alexander also requested information on how we are helping our homeless and foster youth and how we can collaborate with the city of San Bernardino to address this population. This is also scheduled for a upcoming board meeting. Ms. Rosales Medina requested that the board meet with the Facility Subcommittee regarding the Community Workforce Agreement. Mrs. Bios requested an update on the DOJ settlement from 2022 and a presentation from the Multilingual Department. This is also scheduled for an upcoming board meeting. Ms. Chahuski requested to engage the Student Advisory Leadership Council on researching ways to comply with Governor Newsom's cellphone policies and have Student Board members come back with a recommendation. Lastly, President Tillman requested information on the impact of the heat and possibly moving the start of the school year later. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Arrived.
Meeting adjourned.